Called a worthy July 11th meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. We're going to start with a public hearing. We have before us Ordinance 354 amending the transient retail merchant soliciting ordinance. Please.
So, proposed Ordinance 354 amends the township's transient retail merchant/soliciting ordinance. The ordinance has been under discussion for a few months and proposes to make the process more user-friendly by offering different license terms, allowing for electronic submission of applications, and better defining what a transient retail business is. The license terms and fees proposed in the ordinance are as follows: one day, fifteen dollars; one month, twenty-five dollars; and one year, seventy-five dollars. The annual license can be renewed for ten dollars.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right. Hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn our public hearing.
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
We have another discussion yet, by the way. That was your public hearing.
Okay, so, now commencing with the, our regular meeting. First item of the business would be the approval of the minutes from the June 13th meeting.
So moved, sir.
I'll second it.
Any comments, recommends, suggestions, amendments? Hearing none. I'll entertain if all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Next item up is Susan's comments. Anybody here who would like to make a comment on some item that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. If you have a comment on something we're going to be talking about later in the meeting, let's hold it until that moment. So, any comments on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to new agenda items. The state has told us that if we add something to the agenda, we need to announce it now. I mean, the main reason for that is so someone doesn't leave the meeting thinking everything's been taken care of, their concerns, and then we pop something up and surprise everybody with a, with some action that you might have been worried about. So, is, are there, anybody on the board have anything that they would like to add to the agenda for this month? Hearing none, we can dispense with that. Moving on to township business. Let me get my pen. I want to start checking stuff off. We're doing pretty well.
Keep going.
Okay, okay. So, parking in the village has been an issue for a while and we've put together a very diverse committee to talk about this. And I think, what, you guys spent about, close to a year. So, we've seen your recommendations, but we're interested in hearing the details and talking about it. So, anything you want to introduce us with?
First, I'll introduce the members of the committee that are here, and then if you'd like, we could go one by one through the recommendations.
That's good.
Okay, so we have Chairman Bob Hoffman in the back. We have Diane Farr, Tracy Moriarty, Robin Brousse, and Cheryl Speakman. And they all were very hardworking members of our committee and were very thankful for their efforts in putting this report together. And I'd like to stress that the report was written by the members of the committee and that these are their recommendations. So, we did put together, just to kind of make it a little orderly, a PowerPoint that I can start. I'm not going to read this because I think you're all very intelligent. You don't need me to do that. Um, okay. Okay, well, it's not working. I don't know what it's doing. How about we'll just, you know, maybe back out of that. Okay, we'll skip that. We'll just go through the recommendations. How about that? Technical difficulties will make that easier. So, I would like to say that the Village Parking Committee has met for almost about a year and they really worked very hard at looking at our existing regulations. They studied about 12 different communities from across the state and looked at their regulations, also looked at conforming and non-conforming uses. And I think for the first time ever, we had the conversation with the fire company and the churches about using their locations for off-site shared parking. So, their recommendations come from all of that background. So, their first regulation, or first recommendation is to revise the off-street parking regulations to allow for the use of shared off-site parking. So presently, in our ordinance, and this was, we did some research and found this was put in in the eighties when the Heritage Museum bought the property on Loop Road, we allow properties that are in the Village zoning district to share parking if they're within 66 feet of each other. And that very specific number came from the Bollesburg Steakhouse is 66, was 66 feet away from the Heritage Museum and they shared parking. Yeah, so we think Bud was in charge of that. So, when the committee was looking at other communities, and we have it in the report, there's a table that has the other communities that they looked at. Most of them are a couple of hundred feet away, 300 to 500 feet. Honesdale Borough doesn't have a limit by, and it's set by their Borough Council. So, the committee is recommending that the Board of Supervisors consider amending the shared parking so that it's something more usable than 66 feet. And that would be determined by either the Board or the Planning Commission in looking at, taking some mapping and actually looking at how far away things are from other locations and properties that they could share. One of the discussion points that the committee had was, this is kind of something that works if you have businesses that have different hours of operation, right? Like Duffy's has a different hour of operation than maybe the dog grooming facility on the diamond. So, maybe there's a logical share point there. You'll note in the report that each section we identified further questions and items for discussion by the Board. So, I'll stop at, this is the first part. This is like Recommendation A, 1A. So, I'll stop here if there's questions.
Yeah, well, let's, first of all, does anybody in the committee want to comment at this time? If not, we'll let each of the Board members ask questions and maybe get some feedback and then move on through in this process. So, let me start on my left.
Now, we're talking about Board One, right?
Yes.
Yep. Frank?
I was at all the meetings, so I'm familiar with the questions. That's all right. I didn't even mean to. But, so, I've got my questions out, so I'd rather hear from the rest of the Board.
Okay.
You know, they kind of know where I came from.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the committee. I think it's a good exercise and I think we have something to work with. I guess my next concern is, how do we take the recommendations and the subcomponents of those and either prioritize them and begin working through them? Because there's far too many here to do in any kind of logical. And do we do a ranking of one to five on these and then work on the ones?
This is the primary one. This is the very first and primary to get people some relief right now. That's the very first one. So, this is something that we're looking at immediately. So, there's something we're looking at more longer term, but this is something more immediate to really get people.
See, actually, in recommendations.
This will get people, this is what we're going to do.
Yeah, I think the committee had the discussion that this is one of the low-hanging fruits.
Well, I mean, my-
Well, then, I would give that a one priority. Let's jump on that one. And are there ones, are there important things in two, three, four, and five that we need to be working on?
Yeah, I think-
At the same time.
Yeah, I think as we go through the report, you'll kind of find that it kind of moves logically in terms of stuff that's longer term and more larger issues.
I guess I didn't see it that way.
Yeah, please. Yes, Bob.
Bob, can you come in and make a phone call?
I'll keep it under an hour. Under normal situation, wouldn't something like this report go to the Planning Commission?
Do what I'm talking about.
Yeah, the next level of consideration.
That is my intention, but I think first we want to hear from the committee and then add our thoughts or input before sending it to the Planning Commission so they have an indication of the direction we'd like to head.
That, that a copy should come.
Yeah. Nigel?
No, I have no part to speak right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak for myself. I think this is a very logical one. I think it's probably, it can be done. I don't see it as something that needs to have a lot of heavy paperwork or oversight or things like that, but something that people, we can talk together and have agreements. I can't, I can't see people really getting upset about it. If, you know, we, if we find that we have, like, suddenly an overwhelming demand for use of a shared parking area, maybe we'll have to address that at that time. But why, why create problems that we don't have? Are we all consensus on that? Okay, Recommendation number two.
Well, actually, there's a part B to Recommendation One.
Uh-oh.
It's still part of the shared parking.
Yep.
So, the second part of that is, I mentioned that we met with the fire company, Bud was actually there, and the churches to talk about using, it's been mentioned for years that we should use those locations as off-site shared parking so that if I'm located on East Main Street and I have a need to share parking, but there's no one around me to share with, could I use some spaces at the fire hall and have a transactional relationship? The meeting was great. The Fire Hall and St. John's Church were represented and they're all interested in trying to help in whatever way they can. They raised some questions about who takes care of ensuring there's ADA accessibility, pedestrian access, lighting. So, I think that's another part of this, piece of this that should be explored further.
Well, I guess, I gotta jump in right now and say, is ADA, I mean, it seems to me if we're offering parking that's like, you know, 200 yards away, it's not ADA accessible parking. Is that going to be a requirement that's going to, if we give additional parking, does that mean we have to provide additional ADA parking?
That's a good question that we need to ask the Code Office because that's-
Okay.
One thing, one thing I can tell you is, having been a manager of a business with ADA requirements, the ADA comes through the Code Office. The requirement of your, of your business, it's going to come through the Code Office. As a township, if we add parking, municipal parking, we can decide as a township how many, you know, handicap spaces we want to put into those places. But that, that may not negate a property owner's right to get rid of ADA parking. That's going to be a call from somebody else other than us.
Yeah.
Well, we can't take a proactive stance on ADA. Rather than having someone come to us and say, "You need it." Let's look at it right away.
Yeah.
That's different than, than the business.
So, well, I mean, so it might be a decision between whether this is additional parking associated with a business or if it's a municipal parking area.
Right.
Please, Diane. Yes, you do.
Oh, okay. I just thought of this, just as we're talking. If, as you look at the report, you'll find that Amy is talking about signs. So, when a visitor comes to Bollesburg, there'll be a sign telling you where the parking is. Is it possible for us to have ADA parking, say, here, okay? And have that on the sign so we don't have to have it in the church and the fire department? You know, the fire facilities and everything.
We can definitely have it on the sign. I think that's a great comment. We need to find out what the requirements are for those other locations.
The church has, we have, we have three ADA spots at St. John's and, and signs. I think the fire department does too, Pat?
We have two.
Bud?
We have two.
Two? Okay.
So, it sounds like that's more or less-
Yeah, I think it's just a discussion point with the Code Office which we can have.
Any other comments on this item?
Okay.
That's B, right?
Yeah, that was one B.
Moving, we don't have a one C, do we?
No.
Okay, moving on to Item Recommendation Two.
So, Recommendation number two is to consider the development of additional public parking lots. We are, in fact, developing the parking lot behind us next year into hopefully 25 spaces. And this kind of recommendation works alongside with the official map that we're updating. One of the discussion points was, why don't we consider putting locations for future spots on that maybe they're used for something else now, but if they're on the official map and they come up later, the township could consider purchasing them. So, the places we identified, Blue Spring Park, which obviously we already own, so that one we could do now if we wanted to. The post office on West Pine Street, 123 North Church Street, 234 East Main Street, and 229 Rear East Main Street. And then, we also had a discussion point about, oh wait, no, that's not under this. Sorry. So, yeah, so we were talking about putting these on the official map and that's something your official map subcommittee, if you, you know, are amenable to this, they could work that out and then it'll go through the Planning Commission and the public comment period on that.
Where's 123 North Church?
That's, isn't that the Verizon?
That's the white building?
Then that's the garage. Yeah, that's the garage next to the Verizon.
The one that Gary McShay-
Doesn't that, what's Gary McShay's, doesn't that hold for heating system for your house? Didn't we talk about that?
I don't know if it does. I don't remember that conversation.
That was at the, the fire company when St. John's was his place. He said that that's where the, the-
Oh, Joey did that.
The heating system is for the house.
And that's also why it's a good opportunity to vet these further because when we do the official map update, the public is involved in that and so we might find out that none of these work for various reasons.
I've never seen anyone use that, 123 Church.
We use it, Gary uses it all the time, that garage.
Well, it's his property. He parks it, but I've never seen-
Oh, he's always there.
I've never seen anyone in it or using it.
Gary's got, he's got, he has a motorcycle in there. He has, he's got, he has a patio fridge in there. Yeah, he's there a lot.
Voice choice collection.
Kind of like Bud. We won't, we won't talk about what this is called.
So, any other, any comments on this recommendation?
These, these are privately owned, these are property understanders.
Yes.
And they would either have to have a lease agreement or purchasing?
Yes.
I would think. Okay. So, that's, that's, that's logical to think is that way. Post Office is interesting because it's owned by a woman that lives out in Hellcrest. It's, the building is 60 years old and it's not in good shape. And I'm wondering if the post office, the rumors that the person went and leave that years ago but they couldn't find a place, so they renewed the lease for how long? It'd be interesting. That, that piece of property right there would be worth the follow-up on. That would be the most logical place right there.
That parking lot.
Well, the whole, the whole lot, the whole building, building and lot.
Just one comment I'd like to make on this that I thought of after our meetings. If we, as a township, start putting public parking lots up, we better start thinking about camera surveillance because all it's going to take is something to happen and, you know, well, it's municipal parking. How come you didn't know about it? So, I would think that's something we're going to have to plan in, in that process at some point.
Didn't we, didn't we speak about something like that when we said over my parking?
Can you get a microphone, please? Thank you.
Didn't we speak about something like that when we discussed over my parking?
Yep, that's one of the further discussion points and that's something as we're working toward our own parking lot back here we'll need to talk about as well.
Nigel? Danny?
I'm fine, sir.
We all good? Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, Recommendation number three, consider allowing on-street parking spaces to count toward off-street parking requirements.
So, this concept actually came out of Lidditz Borough in Lancaster County and they allow their properties to count on-street spaces towards off-street requirements. And they, what they have done is I think they've gone through and they've inventoried how many on-street spaces they have and then they assign a certain number to each property. And Lidditz, they have marked spaces, which makes it a little bit easier. But this allows a property that might be within one or two spaces of meeting an off-street parking regulation to meet it by using the on-street spaces. It's something to definitely think about as we move forward. We estimated that there are approximately 83 on-street parking spaces available in the village and we would consider maybe looking at this and looking at, do you assign everybody one to two spaces that they can then use or another way to do it, a more equitable, if there's a more equitable way to do it.
What happens if someone else parks in that space?
Well, it wouldn't be definite-
How do you guarantee it for that particular?
Yeah, it wouldn't-
The bigger car wins.
It wouldn't be guaranteed for that business. It would be, oh, we have, you have one to two parking spaces in front of your building, the on-street parking, so you can count that towards your off-street parking. But it's not guaranteed that someone's going to have that available for your business because-
Much like New York City where my daughter is.
Yeah.
They guarantee a spot for the building and, you know. Never opened, but it's there.
And one other item under this discussion point was, and this is what I wanted to say before and it's on the wrong time. North Church Street, the committee was a little concerned because it's very narrow and they were wondering if the on-street parking on the east side of North Church Street should be eliminated. Because it is difficult to get through there.
I mean, do we have site problems at the intersection?
We have challenges, yes.
That intersection is on.
At the diamond, we, you're out in the middle of the diamond.
Well, that's already taken care by regulations as far as parking goes to the intersection.
I think the concern was the parking that happens from the diamond down to basically, not the, not the salon side, the other side.
To the alley.
Yeah, the parking that happens there from the diamond to the alley. That makes it very difficult to get through at times.
How many spots we're talking about? Three?
I think three or four.
Yeah, three spots. I don't know what that's worth worrying about.
Would, would we-
Yeah, did you hear what he said?
No.
Go ahead.
Our fearless leader, Mr. Hoffman, said it's the loading and unloading problems.
Yeah.
And it's, at some point, you can look down and the whole site will be filled with vehicles.
Would these spaces need to be contiguous with the business?
It's a discussion point that we would need to have because some places have much more frontage than other places, which makes it hard.
Or then we would say it has to be within a certain distance or-
So many feet, yep.
Well, this particular problem could be solved simply in saying that if you have a business in downtown Villages, you are not held the same parking regulations and statutes as anybody else. Simple as that.
We're coming up to that recommendation.
Sure.
Did you read the whole report?
Well, no, I didn't read any of it. Was I, I'm not on the committee.
We're, we're coming up to that recommendation.
Anybody else saw on recommendation?
Yeah, I would like to say something on number three. And this is where I, I, I think that part of this process, sitting in the committees, is we have to be good neighbors. Now, that being said, if we're going to allow shared parking, one of the reasons that came up is because we have a lot of non-compliant properties in, in the village and some of them, there's nowhere to put parking on site. So, this is one way we were looking at allowing. But, I don't think we can relax. If, if you have a space and you can put your allotted parking on there, I don't think we allow it, there's got to be verbiage in there that says, "Okay, you can take two out of the, out of your space and take two from the street." No, I think you still have to use the space you have on your property before you start sharing. Because if we don't, what's going to happen is, you know, we're going to have, everybody's going to, everybody's looking for parking spots.
Is this going to be, is this going to be discussed later or I'm missing something?
No, we're going to send it, we're going to send it, but I just wanted to get that-
No, this is going to be discussed later tonight.
Oh, I don't know that.
I was, if it is, I'll discuss it now. You want to wait?
No, it's being discussed now.
Well, you just told me it's really on-
Oh, oh, the overlay? Yes, that's being discussed the next recommendation.
Well, not overlay. I'm talking about requirements for parking.
Yes, that's the next-
If you have a restaurant, you have one, two seats or one seat for every hundred square feet. Just eliminate that in, in the village district and, and you won't need to worry about it if you, if you don't have parking. I mean, it, it, you're right. It's, it is not practical to hold our standard parking regulations you have in the malls or in, about 322s of downtown business district. So, but all of a sudden say, "Well, you need 10 parking spots. You have enough for three." Well, we'll give you one down the road. Why bother with that? If you have, want to open a business, you have to decide whether your business requires parking or not. But if you want to open a business, you can do that. I mean, I, I think it can be so much simpler than worrying about where all your parking spots are. You know, yes, Rob will-
I know, I was going to add something. And one of the things I think, like, we talked about is, we don't, there's a perception, I think, based on this, that there's some parking issues. But technically, if you come into Bollesburg at any given time, high probability is you're gonna get a space to park, to go shopping, to go to Duffy's, to go wherever. So more, I think, of what we were trying to define isn't like, oh, there's people coming and they can't get anywhere to park. It's when that change in use occurs that these regulations are set that then the entrepreneur A can't put this business in because they have a non-conforming lot. They can only do two spots, and there's nowhere else because of the lot, you can't get, they say that you can't get blood from a stone, there's nowhere to get parking. So what other resources do they have to potentially come in as an entrepreneur? Bring a small business, I mean, we don't want the, the village overcrowded with small businesses, but I think it adds to the village a lot, and I think it would be whatever we could do to kind of help bring that into place is sort of one of our primary goals, I think, is what we're trying to achieve with this.
Jack?
What parking is allowed on Church Street going up the hill toward Mr. Potter's property? Is it, is that no parking both sides?
I don't, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I know it's definitely no parking on one side, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Bob, you know, is, is there no parking on that street going up toward your place?
People do. Do you mean on North Church?
Yeah, yeah. South Church, up the hill.
South Church. There is parking on the right-hand side as you go up.
Okay.
From the doctor's office.
Yeah.
And after that, I believe there's no.
Up toward the alley?
Past the alley.
And further up, I don't believe there's.
Okay.
There's no signs for parking. People park there Memorial Day, maybe a couple of times a year, so there's never been an issue. Yeah.
You could put in parking meters and.
Oh, my gosh.
I thought about it, Bruce.
Let's not, let's not start that rumor, please.
Further comments on allowing on-street parking to count towards off-street parking requirements? And again, we're gonna, we're gonna let the planning commission do the hard work here. Okay, recommendation number four.
So this actually speaks to what Bud was just saying, and that is the creation of an overlay district within the village to address some unique property challenges. And this again comes from, uh, we were looking at Lititz Borough and they've done this. Uh, we've identified there are four properties around the diamond that have no ability to provide off-street parking. Um, and these properties rely entirely upon on-street parking and could be negatively impacted if new uses in the village do not provide the adequate off-street parking. Um, we also have non-residential properties that lack the ability to provide additional off-street parking. And again, this is because we have small lots and other non-conforming uses within the village. So the idea with the overlay district is that you look at these unique characteristics that these properties have, they can't meet the maximum impervious coverage limitations, they can't meet the lot coverage, they can't meet the off-street parking, and you create an overlay district, you carve it out, and create separate zoning districts within that district that help those properties. Because again, our village is two-hundred-plus years old and was developed way before anybody had a car or there was modern zoning. So we're trying to take modern zoning and retrofit on top of a historic village, and it doesn't necessarily work well. So this idea is that we, and this would be, this is probably the recommendation that would take the longest to accomplish, because there's a lot of hoops that we sort of have to jump through, so we're not spot zoning, but it's also finding the properties that have these common characteristics, how you define that area, what kind of regulations you write within that area. But it also, again, and I think this was a lot of the theme of what the committee talked about, it provides relief, right? Those four properties that have no off-street parking, that's a problem if they're trying to sell those properties. It, it really limits what they can sell, so this would provide some relief within that ordinance.
Well, that screams to my initial point, there are some things that are gonna take longer to implement, and this is one of them.
Yes.
Why couldn't you just take the entire village district and make it one overlay? One zoning district, and, and that would exempt all these, well, I'm not sure they're, they're exaggerated parking needs, but they would eliminate the needs for that. I mean, you clearly don't need, uh, a ten thousand square foot restaurant. This doesn't need ten, or hundreds parking spots, it's not there. If we were in this, exempt from this overall parking that we have, it's all the whole thing, done.
Well, and that's.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't even sit here.
I mean, that's something, as the planning commission were to review this, that's something that can be certainly looked at to see if that makes sense.
All right, let's, Nigel thoughts? Okay, let me, Frank thoughts? Please?
To the microphone, please.
Point of clarification directed towards Amy. In order to, um, if we were to do the status quo, just as things are now, um, and Riley and me decide to sell, they could sell to another retail.
Yes.
Right. And Elaine's was able to sell. There needed to be no additional parking, none of this hoop-de-doo going on, because it's just, it's going from one type of business to another, to the same type of business. And so it's not a change of use.
No, Elaine's is different because Elaine's.
Okay, then let's skip Elaine's.
Yeah, take Elaine's out, because Elaine's is not, was not sold to another hairdresser.
Okay, let's stick with the.
So the properties that don't have, and Todd's on the call, and I'm gonna ask him to unmute and uncover himself. He can answer this question better than I can, because he's talked to this listener about this. Todd, are you there?
He's covered. You gotta give him a chance to get, you know, dinked.
Oh, there he is.
Hi, Todd.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't get my cursor to land on either the, either the start video. To have it concentrate around the village proper, so that, you know, that's where most of it, practically all of these properties are that don't have the ability to provide any parking on the, on their own property. So the overlay district was pressed that issue with those properties and allow it either to be shared on other properties or have some other ways of, of dealing with it. It wasn't, uh, in the discussions with the committee, and it wasn't with any discussions with, between staff members, ever imagined as something that would extend much beyond the core of the diamond to address those properties that can't provide any parking.
Okay. Um, further comments on recommendation number four to consider changing the overlay? All right, I think there's some work for the planning commission. Let's move on to recommendation number five, review the mix of residential and non-residential uses in the village.
So it's been noted a couple of times, and I think this was in one of the old village district study committees and when the village was first thought of, that the village was supposed to be a harmonious mix of residential uses and businesses. And when we were looking at the parking, we looked at the number of residential properties, the number of non-residential properties, and what that meant for parking. So the residential properties don't have issues meeting the parking requirements. They have, actually have more parking than they need to provide. The non-residential uses are the ones that are generally parking deficient. So, um, kind of a long-term question, and I think this is a question for the board as the policymaker, is as you look at the village of Bollesburg, is, do you have an ideal mix of what that village looks like? Certainly you wanna have, because we are like a little New England-type village, you wanna have businesses, you wanna have residential properties, but how do you wanna support that? And then how does that play into parking overall? You wanna make sure that when visitors come here, they have a place to park as well. So just a long-term thing, and to look at the intensive, I, I know when the village first started in the seventies, there was a big discussion about not allowing coin-operated businesses and not allowing fast food restaurants and things in the village. So continuing to look at the kind of uses that are allowed within that zoning district and how intensive those uses are.
Okay. Comments on the mix of residential and non-residential use? Bud?
I guess, how did you arrive at parking required for non-residential?
So Mark is on the call, Mark did the inventory. So Mark, if you could unmute and uncover yourself?
Yeah, so the parking requirements that are in the ordinance were updated a couple of years ago. What we did is we utilized a, um, a manual from the Institute of Traffic Engineers that specifically defines how much parking is typically required for a given use based on its peak demand. Um, most of the requirements in the ordinance are based on that, some are actually less restrictive. For example, with restaurants, which I know was mentioned earlier this evening, it's, it's actually according to the I T E manual, one for every seventy square feet, but the township can reduce it to one per a hundred. Um, but that's where the, the requirements come from, it's from that I T E manual, which is a standard that's used throughout, you know, municipal governments in trying to assess how much parking is needed for a use.
Well, I actually, I actually think it's less than that, because if you go by our standard parking regulations, restaurants are one for a hundred square feet. I don't know what a pet place is, how many parking spots they have to have for square feet? How many square feet does, uh, your, your business? Four, you have four spots, that's only four. So I, I, I'm not quite sure how accurate that is. I, I always suspect it's a little less than a hundred and ninety, though.
So, going around, Frank, thoughts?
Okay, yeah, the only thing I wanna comment on that is, when I, when I got this inventory from Mark and I was looking at it, uh, my urgency level went way down, because if you look there, it says we have a total of seventy-one parking deficiencies in the township. And if you go back to the page there where it talks about, uh, consider allowing on-street parking spaces to count toward off-street requirements, we have eighty-three municipal parking spaces in the township. So if I take that to, we're actually plus twelve. So until we add this out here, we've got, the parking, just like Robin said, we don't have people not being able to park when they want to. What we have to decide is, I think this more goes to what business do we wanna allow in the township? Do we, do we want, uh, you know, fast food, was mentioned earlier? Do we want, you know, big things? Do we want, or do we want small shops? You know, how do we wanna do it? And then I think that's where the parking requirements for when a use changes comes, that we, we get the right businesses that we're looking to keep in, in the township. So I'm not, I'm not worried that we, we have a parking problem per se that we can't get people to park. I think where our parking problem is, is our ordinance is when people wanna sell their business, sell their house, you know, those, that's when it's coming up. So we have to look at that, I think, and, and, and make our ordinance match what we're, what we have. And I think that's when, the overlay, all these things, that's kind of what we're, what the committee's saying is, let's make our ordinances and, and our uses what, what we want it to be. And I think that's where I'm coming from.
And the proximity of why to park in front of a business isn't always gonna be as it should be. I mean, if, if people park a new lot out here, the closest business would be.
Elaine's property.
Elaine's, and then maybe yours, coming down. So you have, you have at least, you have at least a one walk block, one block walk. But, you know, we, we just can't guarantee proximity.
But do you want me to say what I said in the first meeting? And everybody pushed me out, I said, we just close it from here all the way out to Blue Spring, down South Church, North Church, and we make it a walk-in plaza. And you can park somewhere else. Guess that, but that's not, that did grow to be.
You can park on Hines' Hall.
Yeah, you can park on Hines', I don't care.
Yeah, something just dawned on me about that, too. You mentioned the choir contractor, he's met his requirements in the back of that. Was his included in a hundred and two provided?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
So, the, okay, how many is required? I think he's required five, maybe?
Uh, Todd can answer that question.
Okay, well, I'm just, the numbers are probably close, I just.
Yeah, I think, uh, if memory serves me correctly, and marketing correctly, if I'm wrong, I think he's required to provide something like six spaces, and he provided eight.
So then that's, that's another hundred and four provided?
No, it's counted in the hundred and two.
So Nigel thoughts?
What requirements do we have for the Tate Food Processing Building in terms of affecting for their employees? How many do they have, how many do they use?
That's a Todd question.
Todd?
I didn't hear the question.
Todd, he wants to know how many parking spaces are required for the Tate Farms processing facility down on Chambers Alley? How many they're required and how many they have?
Well, that's in a residential zoning district, and it's, uh, it was a grandfather's use, I think, from before when we had zoning. I think, uh, it, it historically always had non-residential uses in it. So it's, it's, it's not really anything, it, it's not really considered as part of this because it's not in the village, uh, and it's treated differently than would be under standard parking regulations, because like I said, it's grandfather.
He hasn't changed much from the electrical contractor to colonial printing, who is now similar to employees about, about that number.
Well, that's, you're talking about residential now. Uh, in our one, there's no business allowed except for certain home uses, so I don't know where.
You only have one employee?
Yeah, but, I don't know.
This property's grandfather.
But it is grandfather, so I don't know that that's a good example of anything right there.
No, no, it's not, you can't, you can't really use that property for this discussion.
Well, I, I'm gonna offer two comments, and one's reflecting what we've already said. I think there's, there's kind of an expectation on some people, they ought to be able to park right in front of the business they wanna, they wanna, um, go visit. And, not speaking for anybody else, but I tell you what, making me walk a hundred yards from a parking place to a business is probably a public service. And the other thing I'll mention is, you know, kind of, we're all in this together, and certainly our businesses are in this together. And if you've got a business in this town and there's not adequate parking, you may not have adequate number of clients. So that, that's why I think it's important that we work together and figure this out. I think what we wanna do is kick this up, down to the planning, up to the, up to the planning commission.
Over, done.
And let them. Okay, yeah, but let them, okay, go please.
Bruce just mentioned, what I was. Bruce just mentioned, uh, perception of parking problems, and I don't understand all the nuances of having a business in a neighborhood. But downtown, I know many people won't go downtown because there's no parking. That means there's no parking in front of Appalachian Elbow House when they wanna go to Appalachian, and meanwhile, the parking lot is all or nothing. So it's perception, if you can't park in front of your particular store, there's a huge parking problem. This afternoon, I sat at the diamond for about a half an hour. Diane and I had a chat there about this whole issue. There was one car parked in the whole, whole area of the diamond. Uh, it was over by Scott Culberson's place over on that side. There was no other cars parked in the diamond for at least a half an hour today. I can't speak to what's happening on either end of Main Street. Maybe somebody just, they had a parking problem there, so. I'm close by saying, I had a conversation with Ruth Quarter about village district ordinance. I came here in seventy-eight, after that was already in. And the idea, as Amy said, was to have a harmonious mixture, I think that's the word, between residential and business. But primarily, the focus on residential, this was a residential community, and they wanted to allow for shops, small businesses, that would be like, maybe we're here in the old days when, you know, the filter lived in that house and we have a business, and a lot of people living in the houses and having the opportunity to have a business. Now, other businesses are larger, and they're here, companies have been here a long time and wanted to succeed. So I would emphasize, my suggestion is to tilt toward residential, uh, considerations out of all this. So I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Yeah, please.
I, I don't like to say these things, I am the biggest business in town, but I will reiterate what I said again and again during this parking meeting. I have every single piece of paper, all the way back to the beginning of the eighties, on every parking committee that has started. I have read all of it. Carl handed it to me very nicely. Every single meeting, every single, um, piece of paper, always, overemphasized, constantly, all we care about is residents, all we care about is residents, all we care about is the residents, the residents. And, you know, when I was reading it, it didn't seem like that this was a village or that there was a village that was wanted here. So I don't want to, I think that, I think that we all are equal in this, moving forward, and we should all be helping against each other. But I don't think overemphasizing this or underemphasizing this is a good way to look about this. We want a village, and we just have a village. We don't want a village, that's a different thing altogether. So that's my comment about the whole thing, I think we're all people in all of this.
Please.
First off, I'd like to thank Bob Hoffman, who did a fantastic job, um, with his excellent leadership. We really appreciate it. Um, secondly, I think the report's got a lot of really good points to it, and I think you've identified already a number of the points. And, um, hopefully, the planning commission will agree. And hopefully, the planning commission will agree and will go forward. My only concern is, we are to the point, to follow up on some of the things people said, that we have 58% are residential properties and 42% are businesses. So if you look at it through that lens, okay, you see that we are getting to the point where we're moving towards a 50/50. Whatever. We're moving into an area where residential may not be as much of a focus. What my concern with residential is, if we do a change of use, we will have different types of businesses, right? We know that, that's a fact. We may have, if you want to sell by Leon Main and you can't sell it as retail, you're going to have a different type of business. Now, that's not necessarily bad, okay, but it will be different. My concern is that when you have a village, you will have to be so careful, and I'm not telling you how to do this, you guys are the leaders here. You have to be so careful to have one business surrounded by five residential, okay? And that's the case in certain places. And what further concerns me is, we have no business hours. They can be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that's what I'm, the charge that I'm putting on your shoulders. Please, let's keep the ability for these snug little houses. We know how close we are to each of these. These buildings don't have a lot of space. And if you've got a business there that is going, let's say, nine to nine, and it's seven days a week, like the business that will possibly be coming on Academy and Main Street, then I think you need to look at that to consider how it's going to affect the residents.
Well, I don't think you can have 24-hour business hours, can you?
You can't, we can't establish legally business hours.
I think it's, I don't believe 24-hour business are allowed in village districts right now.
What, I did ask that question, I was told there are no regulations.
We don't have any business hour regulations.
No, there was. Let me put it this way, what happened to it?
I don't know. I don't know.
One of those things, no, when that was first, Rob, there was no 24-hour business in Harrison Township. And the Unimark down there broke that mold, but there was never challenged on that. Now they're only open 12, 6, 8, I don't know how many hours they're open now.
Todd can answer that question, he just turned on.
Yeah, we spoke to our solicitor about it, and we were told it's illegal hours of operation on businesses, especially if you're singling out one or more businesses in one or more zoning districts to do that. It may be possible to put hours of operation on all businesses in every zoning district if you want to do that. That'd be something we have to talk to the solicitor about. But you just can't single out a type of business or a zoning district and say, here, you can have hours of operation because it's illegal.
Maybe that's why it was withdrawn from this village district regulation because it's illegal. Well, as far as, business hours of operation are what keeps you in business or out of business. If you want to have a restaurant or you have a business in Bollesburg, it depends on 24-hour operation, you're screwed. There's nobody in Bollesburg after 10 o'clock at night. So I can't even imagine somebody wanting to put a business that needed 24-hour work here.
The business that is coming in at the end of Academy Street and Main Street, as the hours are now, they are seven days a week, nine to nine, with the exception that they will stay open for parties from 10 or later.
I don't know that it's appropriate to talk about a business that has not determined that they're located in the village.
Right, okay. Well, that's fine. I didn't name the name of it, okay? But the point, that's not the point. The point is, please be aware of the fact that there's residents all around it. Whatever you can do would be helpful.
We have protections on it. We have our so-called, not nuisance ordinance, nuisance, what's it called?
Noise.
No, it's not a noise, it's called disorder of conduct, which handles noise or that type of thing. We have that. So I don't know, but we'd be aware of it. Certainly, we should, we'd like to build into protection, know that about it, yeah.
I don't think we want to get into that right now. That's a whole different bag of words.
All right. Anything further before we send this off to the planning commission?
Do you have all those comments written down?
Yes, sir, please.
First of all, you heard the comments from this committee. We had a great, we started out with quite a number of people, and it got reduced mainly to this group right here. And they attended all the meetings, and they did a great job in offering diverse comments. So we had a diverse group, believe me. We did have formal meetings, we had minutes. We distributed minutes to all the people that were signed up, even though they didn't attend, so that they couldn't come back to us and say that we didn't inform them. So I think that Amy did a great job. First of all, I think I can speak for this committee. The work that the township did for us in terms of the manager, the zoning officer, Mark, staff did a great job in providing us all the information we needed, and even more. One pace and point, wait till you look at the map of Main Street with non-conforming units. It will shock you. And that's the essence of the craft of what Bollesburg, the structure in Bollesburg, small lots, trying to meet the locals on this. I think your biggest challenge, quite frankly, is just this last discussion with the next. That's going to be a big one. I don't know that we got into that deep enough because there's certain economic parameters that kind of dictate how things are living, what might be coming into town. I remember Ruth Quarter, at one time, God bless her, said, you know, we don't want her in McDonald's. Well, quite frankly, if you look at the economics and the studies that McDonald's does on a restaurant, this isn't going to be the place where they put restaurants. Some of the things that we did not do, we did not look at a design review board. It came up. We had some initial discussion, but we felt that the charge that he gave us in terms of parking was the principal reason for this, to conduct our discussions. So we did not, we did not look at that. Should it be? Maybe. It might. Be open-minded to it. Do we agree with it or disagree? I'm not saying, I'm not answering that. We did not offer solutions. We got in the weeds pretty deep, and there were times when we had to say, look, look back up. We need to have a lot more quiet conversation about the parameters. What are we talking about? Your planning commission is very talented. There's some talented people in this township. I think you'll eventually work through these things and have some positive recommendations. The other thing that I'd like to suggest is that we did the initial study. We're throwing this basketball back in your court. You're going to have to dribble with it. But what we're asking is that as you proceed with your studies, the planning commission supervises, that you keep us informed, to the point that maybe we have another meeting like this, and you tell us, well, this is where we came, this is what we got accomplished, this is what we haven't accomplished. What do you think about what we're doing, how we're doing this? Because we put a lot of time into this. And, you know, we don't want the typical report to go up on the shelf. And I know you're looking at it, and I know, I trust that you'll put a lot of effort in it, as well as your planning commission. But it would be great to be involved in the process. And so all you have to do is get in touch with Amy, and maybe we sit down in a workshop and talk about where we got, where you got. And maybe by that time, think through some more options about some of these possibilities. I think the parking issue will start to solve itself pretty quickly. I think the tough one's going to be, you know, land development plans, but parking be a major criteria for whether you can put your business in or not. We're concerned that businesses can come into town, that they're not driven out because they can only provide two parking spaces. So we want to try to encourage that, but at the same time, there's efforts and thought about limiting the number of the percentage. It's going to be a nice challenge for you. I don't envy you, but I think that you've got good people that can think it through. Thank you for inviting us to do this. We welcome the charge, we did our best. It's time now to let you work with it, and then get back to us if you can. I'd appreciate it. And then follow the process.
Yeah, well, thank you for all the work you've done. I don't think you're totally off the hook, we're going to keep you involved. And I'll just comment on one thing you said. We are a non-conforming community. And we are a community with a certain character, and I think all of us want to maintain that character. So let's move this on to the planning commission.
Well, I'd like to know, what do we want the planning commission to come back with? I mean, I'm not so sure that they haven't done more than the planning commission would ever be able to do.
Well, so maybe as a start, why don't we put this on, planning commission's not meeting this month, but maybe as a start, we could put this on their August agenda and have a discussion, just like we had now, just reviewing the report. We can invite the members of the parking committee that are available to come to their meeting and give them the baseline information. And then perhaps later in the fall, you could actually have a work session with the planning commission. After you've had time to digest a little bit, you can talk about some priorities and invite the committee members to come to that as well.
Well, I think they should look at the five recommendations, decide which ones they want to tackle right now, and then put the remaining ones on their work plan for 2023. Does that seem reasonable?
That was my initial comment when we started the discussion. To prioritize, hit the same employee in the system, and they do it so well. Allow them to do that, Kelly, let's get them.
Okay, everybody good on this? Thanks, everybody. Next up, proposed ordinance 354, amending the transient retail merchant soliciting ordinance.
We had a public hearing on this, and there's only one thing I want to add, and that was just that last month, there was some concern that was expressed about other municipalities were not making individual vendors obtain licenses when they participate at craft-type events in the area. I did reach out to the local municipalities to ask more information. State College Borough, they have an ordinance for Arts Fest, and they do require vendors at Arts Fest and First Night to obtain a license from the Borough. College Township requires each vendor at an event to obtain a license, and Ferguson Township does not require individual licenses. They actually have their farmer's market submit a site plan so they know where all the vendors are. So I did reach out to that.
I'll make a motion to move into discussion, sir.
Certainly. Do I have a second? Okay. Further discussion on this item?
Well, I'll just, I'm making a statement. This is still a little cumbersome to read. Some of the wording, of course, is legalese. But as far as a peddler's license and a temporary, or what are they, a temporary license for peddlers or for temporary stands around the road, I think this is a good ordinance. We don't want people coming to our home that we haven't vetted. We don't want them coming and knocking on our door. We don't want to be able to see someone on sample 1320, that we don't know whether his food was credible or not. As far as the peddler's license goes, I think this is fine, fine. But I also think we need to divide another category, and that would be special events, which would be like Tussie Mountain or my university winery or places like that, and at Watson Farm. Have that a different, other than all this, have a different criteria for that. And I know we talked about having the owners of that, wherever they're held, have them submit the names and go from there. So this, to me, is just a peddler's license. I don't think it should involve artisans or special events like at the winery or at Watson's, or I'm just naming a few I can remember of, Tussie Mountain. I think they should be responsible for those people, not us. That's about all I have to say on that.
Going around, sure.
Grammatically, page three, three dash one dash 10 dash one, second line down. There's an extra A in that sentence? Self-supply in a writing A confirmation? Grammatically, is that correct?
Oh, it'll also be caught when they edit this information.
Something you had to read it a couple times, I don't know what.
Well, I kept reading it, and I thought there was an extra A in it or something.
Yeah, there was something there.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Further comments?
Scratch the A.
Scratch the A. Frank?
You know, I kind of agree with Bud a little bit. But I think that when we have, like, you know, arts festivals or, you know, things like that where we have artisans, I would be amenable to having some kind of blanket with the list of, like Ferguson does. I think that that would be a great addition to this and make it even a lot simpler and a lot less work.
A lot of different category.
It could be, it could be that, but it could be added to this. I mean, I'm not in favor, I'm in favor of getting this ordinance done. But I'm saying, you know, moving forward, that might not be a bad thing for the next step for it.
We could look at our special events ordinance and look at incorporating it in that.
Right, exactly. If we put it in that, then maybe we could, that would make things a lot easier for, you know, arts festivals or, you know, Memorial Days or whatever like that. Claire, please.
Just a question about that. So would that be, in your idea, would that be in lieu of an individual permit for each artist or vendor?
In my vision, it would be something like that, yes. I mean, this is, there's 16 points you have to go through here. And it would make sense if you're a daughter or peddler or whatever you do, that would make sense. It's some very, very poignant questions here that I don't think have anything to do with, artisans or vendors that come into special events has nothing to do with that. And it would make the holder of that event have to submit the names, and they certainly would be responsible, anything happened on their property or whatever. So as they would be anyhow. And I think it would make it a lot less earnest, a lot less invasive to do that. And I don't know that, why we're being so paranoid about that because, not being paranoid about daughter, peddlers, I'm sure about that, but we're so worried about third, about 100, like the day in town we have here, we're worried about whether, I don't know what we're worried about. I have no idea what we're worried about at all. So I guess we'd just like to get their 35 bucks and go from here. But I think we should develop a separate ordinance that would address the university winery, Tussie Mountain, anybody that wants to have an event, we'll address that. And make it very simple for them. They get the names, they contact the people, they work with the people. If necessary, provide a list of names.
I agree, moving forward, that might be something that would be good to talk about. I'm definitely in favor of this ordinance moving forward. My biggest concern, if we were to talk, if we were to talk about a more blanket permit for an event, is accommodating smaller events. So like a little pop-up that would only have maybe three vendors.
Wouldn't it be a sponsor? Would there be a sponsor for that? A lead person?
Not, well, sure, maybe a small business or a resident or, you know, like, the first thing that pops up in my mind, probably be an art opening. And it would just be me or me and another artist. So it would have to be something that would accommodate, cost-wise, as an event, a smaller event, not just, you know, Tussie Mountain or Arts Fest or something larger scale, obviously. You know, it would have to be relative.
Well, there would have to be a designated person that would say, look, we're having a event, and these are the people who are at my event, who's this, who they are. That way, they don't have to go get their fingerprint by the state police.
The language that I saw, Dairy Township, which is Hershey, Dauphin County, they have language in their ordinance that says, if you're organizing an event with five or more vendors, you can submit a blanket license to them. So that's something that we could consider looking at and setting the parameters. So maybe it would be five and more, or the board can decide how low they want it to go.
So if it was five or more, then it could be a blanket? And then those vendors would not need to get a permit?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I just saw the language in Dairy Township's ordinance. I haven't reached out to their manager to see how they're actually handling that. They have a police department as well.
Well, there would have to be a sponsor, or one person is a contact person. That contact person should get that information. They don't have to go in, for instance, if it's an almost, stand itself, there's no social security number, there's no. security number, there's no, they're not going to go to the state police for fingerprints, they have driver's licenses. So that's, that's something that I think can be easily handled by whoever's sponsoring that event. If you have a, want to have an event, you or whatever it is says, okay, I got three people, that's a blanket, you just go.
Yeah, I mean, three or five or more. So if it's less than five, all the artists would have to have, or the vendors would have to have their own permits?
I mean, it's something that, if the board wants to look into, we haven't really looked into it, other than I saw it in that language.
You're getting a hairy situation there, less than five, three or two, that's almost a roadside stand that we want to consider as part of a peddler's license, I think. I guess the idea is if you have someone that's sponsoring something, whoever it is, and they are going to sponsor other stands or two, whatever he's sat on, I think, they're the responsible, gather the information, turn it over to us, that way we don't have to worry about all this sixteen things they have to go through to get it through.
I realize this is far in the future, I just want to say one more thing. If that is true, and it's, you know, move forward and have this blanket permit for an event with five or more vendors, that would put people in a difficult situation. For instance, if the Heritage Museum were to have an event with five or four vendors, and then those vendors would say, well, on all the other events, I didn't have to get my own individual permit because it was covered under this blanket event permit. And so then, that's just not going to happen, because no vendor is going to want to get their own permit if that's the only thing.
Meaning if it's under five or under four?
Under five, yeah. So that's my only concern about having changiness.
Well, I guess we could say, I don't know how, we could say, if someone wants to sponsor an event, I guess I'm not sure if we care to have three or four or five, I don't know that would matter. You're right. If it's more than one or more than two, it's not a, if it's only one, that's not an event. It's a peddler's license. If you decide to sponsor two or three or four, or whatever it is, other events you have a place, then you are the sponsor of that event, and you're people to commit. Again, would simply have to register with you, maybe I would be one, would want to charge them a couple bucks. I'm beyond that, I don't know. That's just a suggestion about that. It seems to me much, much less, much less ominous than making everybody through all this mess. And I know, and having worked at the People's Choice for thirty, what, how many years were they there? Those people come in and they set up, they have people come and help them for one day or two days, and maybe, it would be a real pain, and not what we accomplish. I mean, every one of those hundred and eighty, how many people are at People's Choice down there? I mean, any vendors down there? Maybe, I don't know. Every one of them go through this whole thing, they're from all over the state or the county, and maybe they'll have, somebody help with them for one day, and then through this whole process, and for what benefit would it be to us? No, really. So I, that's just, I'm just, that's my suggestion, to make it simple, and still protect us.
Nigel, thoughts?
Well, my thought right now is that if we're hard on this ordinance, it's gonna make it easier for vendors right now. I think we need to get this done, but I do, I am open to the possibility of adding something for special events, certainly. And we might want to, as Amy said, put that in, just include that in the special events ordinance, or, I don't know, I mean, because, yeah, it could be small, like the Heritage Museum having an event, for example, won't meet the criterion for a special event that requires registration with Township, for example, unlike a Tussie Mountain.
No, that would fall to.
Exactly. Unlike an event at Tussie Mountain, that's going to attract hundreds. So.
I think that, you know, if we don't do this, we're back where we are, where we started from, and this is certainly an improvement upon where we were at. So we're not necessarily done. This doesn't preclude us from doing more and tackling more questions later on. But in terms of this particular ordinance, it moves us into a better position than we were at. So, I mean, for me, let's do this, and then let's take a look in the future at what else we might want to, we might want to do.
I think, I think the one thing we've got to keep in mind, and I think the residents and everybody, we are not going to come up with an ordinance that's going to cover every instance for every person out there. We're going to get an ordinance that we're going to get that's going to cover ninety percent of what goes on. You're always going to be dealing with the ten percent. So no matter what we do with this or something in the future, it's not going to be perfect. And the same thing can really apply to what we just talked about in partnering. We're not going to get something that everybody's going to like. We've got to get something that everybody is functional for everybody, I guess is what I'm saying.
Todd cleared one thing up. Come, as far as police powers go, with or without an ordinance does not affect our police powers to enforce noise or anything else along those lines. So if we don't, if we don't have any, anybody have registration, we still have the police powers to do that.
Do we have a motion?
We do have a motion, yep, and a second.
Do we need further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Biden, and Amy, and thank you, Todd. Thanks, Claire.
Yeah. Claire, you've put a lot into this. All right. One more big item, and then I think we're going to move along pretty quickly. Well, we'll see. Anyways, financial planning.
Yes, so one of the things that we talked about during the budget, and also we've talked about the last couple of years during our audit, is the need to have a fund balance policy. So Mr. Miller is here, we've been kind of working on some thoughts as to how we can move forward with that. We gave you probably way too much information, but hopefully it's helpful as you consider this. We put together a memo that explains sort of a fund balance policy, how that would work, and also explains kind of the history of how our finances work, and also some other additional needs that we see, which are a structurally balanced budget policy and a health insurance reserve policy. So we thought tonight we could just sort of touch on all of these things, answer questions that you have, and this is sort of an ongoing discussion. We can get some framework to write a policy for you to look at next month. So in terms of our fund balance now, and we put together, and I put on your, at your place tonight, we put together from last year, showing you sort of how our cash flow goes, and on the second page, it shows you sort of the change in our fund balance through the quarters of the year last year. So we collect eighty-seven percent of all of our real estate tax money comes in by June first every year. So that means that we get the most majority of our revenue in the second quarter, and then we spend most of our money in the second, third, and the fourth quarter, because that's when we do our projects. So when we're looking at our budget, and when we sit down, our budget, if you think of it as a pie, two-thirds of that pie are things that are controlled by outside agencies, the police, the CADA, the COG. So that's a pretty large chunk. One-third of our budget are the direct services that we provide to our residents, and that's what we have control over, and that's what we try to do a pretty good job of operating leanly and not putting a lot of extra things in the budget that we know we're not going to do. So as we're looking at our finances, if you're looking at how your money's coming in, we've had a lot of growth. We were the fastest-growing municipality from 2014 to 2021, and we've had a pretty decent fund balance because of that growth, because we were blowing all of our projections in a good way on the revenue side for transfer taxes and earned income tax and real estate. Our growth is now largely slowing down, and we have the maintenance facility that we financed. So we're at a position where we're kind of at the crossroads, where we want to make sure, as we continue to move on, and we're a bigger municipality now, we have more residents who are demanding services, that we're also making sure we're keeping our financial house in order, and that we're looking at making sure that we're not going to have to go back to residents and raise taxes unnecessarily, that we're not looking at big jumps, and that we're looking at how we're paying for everything. So if you look at a fund balance, and the recommendation from the Government Finance Officers Association is basically two months of your recurring expenditures, which in our case is $587,000 and some change. That's a lot of money, and that seems like a lot of money. We ended last year with a $398,000 fund balance, which didn't, that includes some of the health insurance.
It does include the health insurance.
Yeah, so we do have, that's, a piece of this is we have a health insurance reserve of about $170,000 right now, and you need to talk about what you want to do with that. So if you're looking at your fund balance itself, I did talk with the other communities around us, and they're all doing between eight and twelve percent, and then the Borough is doing the two months recurring expenditures. So we've kind of given you a chart within the memo that shows what ten percent of our recurring expenditures is $268,000. Twelve percent is $345,000. So as you're thinking about what you want to do in terms of a fund balance, and you can also, Bruce and I had this conversation, you can also think in terms of stepping into it, right? You don't have to say, like, maybe your goal is someday we'd like to have two months of recurring expenditures in our fund balance, but that seems like a huge jump right now, and let's tackle the structurally balanced budget policy, which says that we're going to pass a budget where our expenditures and our revenues equal out at the end of the year, and we're not eating into that fund balance, because we put together the information that shows that over the last three years, we've been balancing the budget by eating into the fund balance. Which I understand, taxes increases are not fun things and not things we want to do, but we also put together in the one chart to show you how much you would have to raise your taxes to make that a structurally balanced budget. So if you start by saying, let's just piece off, and let's say we're going to do a structurally balanced budget every year and adopt that policy, and then let's say our fund balance policy is we're going to start at ten percent of our recurring expenditures, you'll be a lot farther ahead than you have been in the past. And then the other piece of that puzzle is looking at your health insurance reserve money that's come in. Again, we have about $170,000 sitting in there now. We just got $40,000 from the health insurance company last week. So looking at what you want to do with that money, you can unassign that fund balance, and you could apply it to your regular fund balance. You can say, we're going to take some of it, we're using some of it now to offset the employee contributions on their health insurance this year. A couple of years ago, we gave the employees that are contributing to their health insurance a three-month amnesty, where they didn't have to pay for their health insurance contribution. So you can look at any manner of things. You can look at providing wellness programs, although it's a little harder because we're smaller, and it's not something that's done for smaller municipalities. But having, I think, those three pieces of the puzzle together, I think will help when we come to budget time as well.
Stepping into it really allows us to look at the speed or lag to of growth in Township. Because we know it's slowing down a little bit, but we don't know within a year or two or three, if that is going to escalate or stay the same. We have building projects, developments that are still doing pretty good. We can expect some additional residents for tax money coming in. So I think, I like the idea of a slow progression into this, rather than making a big step and maybe regretting it in a year or two.
Well, I'll say that, I mean, I just view this as being financially prudent. I wouldn't want to have my own personal finances be so tight that, you know, I have nothing in the bank if something, you know, if suddenly the car blows, you know, the engine blows up, I need to be able to take care of that now. And I would rather be able to take care of it rather than borrowing money to take care of it. So I just, look, we're at over fourteen point eight percent in terms of what our fund balance is of recurring expenditures.
With the health, that's with the health insurance.
Well, looking at the three ninety-eight, five seventy-five.
And that's true as of the end of 2021, but you, if you look at what you budgeted for 2022, if you achieve your budget as planned for 2022, your fund balance will only be $104,000 at the end of this year, in December. And that includes $136,000 of what your manager has assigned as healthcare. Those are the accumulated refunds of healthcare that she has assigned, which you have the right to unassign. But that includes that. So if you take that hundred and thirty-six out, you're now at a deficit in your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance.
This isn't our best year.
But you, you made this decision consciously when you built the facility, assuming that your revenues would be enough to pay those debt payments, and you didn't raise any taxes to help pay for that.
And what hurt us was the expense of the culvert, you know? If it weren't for federal funds.
Yeah, we'd be borrowing money.
And penned out deadline of having it done by September or December or something, we'd be in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, and that, that's part of the purpose of having a fund balance policy, is to have a little bit set aside in case something unexpected happens. But also to cover the cash flow issues, as Amy pointed out. You collect most of your revenue in the second quarter, and then the next three quarters, you're using more than you're taking in. So that helps balance that, cover you, because you don't have a line of credit to draw on for cash flow purposes.
Yeah, and the, let's say in the BD years, before Dwight, we got a little scare.
Yes.
And we did a modest increase in taxes in order to deal with that scare. As I recall, we had one person come to our meeting, and that individual didn't object, they just wanted to know what was going on. And so my own, my own instinct is, let's move in the right direction. We don't have to get, you know, we don't have to get froggy, we don't have to jump, but we need to, we need to move in the right direction. Something is, you know, I mean, again, we're talking about changes that might equate to, you know, a cup of coffee a week for a resident.
Do we need to look at each of the funds? Is it the percent of?
This is just, this is just the general fund. So this excludes the other five funds. This is just your general fund. My recommendation is to first make the decision that you're going to live within your means each year, and that's what Amy referred to as the structurally balanced budget policy. That policy says that you will ensure that your budget every year, that there's revenues, recurring revenues, to cover those recurring expenses, that you won't make decisions to spend money that you don't, that you won't bring in. So that, that's step one, and you would do the same thing at home. You would say, we're not taking in enough money to live this lifestyle, the first thing we need to do is decide that we're going to change our lifestyle and live within our means. And then your second step would be, okay, now let's build up a prudent savings to ensure our ebbs and flows and in case of emergencies. So that would be my recommendation, as you think about this, is to take it in those steps to first say, we like this structurally balanced budget policy. That doesn't preclude you from, from passing a budget that uses fund balance. It just says that we're going to make sure that we cover our recurring costs. If we make a choice to spend down for one time item, you certainly have the authority to do that. Your policy is only your own policy, and it only guides your own decisions. It's not a law, it's not, it's just a policy that you adopt that helps guide you in making, in developing your budget.
Well, let's go around the table. If we could start over here on the right with Nigel.
Yeah. I'm not really big on finances, but, I mean, we, it is interesting. We've always, we've always squeaked by. I've been, I've been involved in the township for a long time. We've never had a real issue where we had to suddenly borrow money. Admittedly, our fund balances have been kind of tight sometimes, but we've never gone over. And, and I've always, I've always wondered, you know, it's like, what are the recommended fund balances? Twenty percent of your annual budget? Is it that high?
Sixteen point six seven, it's two months.
Fifteen, roughly?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah, about seventeen percent is the recommendation. And that's just, that's a national GFOA recommendation. As Amy said, in the center region, everyone has something different. It's, it's what you think is prudent for your municipality. So you, you as the representatives have to balance the holding of taxpayer money, what is the prudent amount for you in your municipality? The GFOA is just a recommendation, it's just a best practice that you.
The seventeen percent may sound excessive. Maybe you look at ten, because ten across the board is a number that, that's pretty comfortable.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I just took the words out of my mouth.
And you look at five, then I think you're beginning to maybe gamble a little bit.
Yeah.
And, you know, that ten to me is a nice balance, that I use at home, in fact, as a number.
I've never had a formal budget at home in my personal finances, ever, ever.
I do, my wife. Sorry about that. Right. So what I, what I said to Amy as we started this discussion was, all of you have done a fantastic job, but you're not going to be here forever. And it's, it's good for you to set the guidelines to ensure the future, so as you decide that you're going to be done with this job, you've already, you've set the framework for the next group to, to follow that. So as you decide that, that you're going to be done with this job, you've already, you've set the framework for the next group to, to follow that ensures the, the security of.
And the one certainty is to pay down the maintenance facility. Do it until what, 2040? When does it get paid?
2029?
No, 2029 is not when it ends. It's a 30-year loan.
It's in the 30.
Yeah.
That's a certainty that has to appear.
It's, yeah, it's, your debt service is about $267,000 a year between now and 2029.
And we committed to doing that because there was a need.
Yeah, it was a long-term need, exactly.
Frank, your thoughts?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that I've thought about since day one on the board was, how do you know when to raise taxes? You know, we've been, we've been, I call it fat, dumb and happy. You know, we've had growth that has more than exceeded our expense increase. So if I'm going to look at this, the one thing that I heard here tonight that I would agree with, I would sooner, if I have to raise taxes, I would sooner bring it up a couple, like a couple tents than have to make it, bring it up a point or two.
Yep.
Because a couple tents, you can probably, you know, most people could get an extra 20, $30 a year, whatever it would come out to. I, I would sooner do that if, if that's, but right now, we're just guessing every year when we do this. Should we raise this year? Should we raise? I look at this, if we want to do a fund balance and, and we want to look at this and, and starting with a balanced budget, I have no problem with that. But if we're going to build this up to 5, 10, 15, whatever percent we decide on, I wouldn't be opposed of, of using that, like a, a small increase to fund that. In other words, till we get to the point where we're, we're okay. But, but I don't know, I, I don't know enough about, like I, I've always been business, you know, retail, that type of thing. So when it comes to this type of finance where we're, we're using money from here and over here and bringing all these funds together, I'm not as up on it, but I, I understand it, but I'm not as up on it. But I just think that right now, when we do our budget and we walk out of the budget, we're happy if, if we come out and we're, you know, we're, we're going to have enough money to pay the bills.
And the five-year capital plan is a major tool that we need to, maybe we should extend it to seven years. And give us a little more projection of what we'll need.
But I think, I, I look at it more or less as a tool to tell us when we should be raising taxes. Not so much that, that, you know, we should just raise it arbitrarily to get money. But, but that fund, if that fund's moving up and down, getting close to whatever we set, then maybe that's when it tells us we have to do something. Because like I said, right now, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants.
Well, the heavy inflation of what we're hitting now with respect to simple materials is something that, I don't know how you build that into it.
Yeah, that's.
Year from eight to 20,000 to pave a little road is, you know, nice, but you know.
Let's, let's hear from Mr. Graham.
Well, I, I am never in favor of holding other people's money simply because we have, we want to develop a nest egg. I'm not in favor of that at all. In fact, I, but we do need, we do need to have a fund balance or, I should say a reserve fund. That's called a reserve fund. I believe it makes very much sense. The, however, as far as, as far as our budget goes right now, I think we do well with it. We do well in, in maintaining our good, lean budget. And each year we look at that, that's our responsibility and say, well, we know what our projected income is. We know what to spend, what we could spend a lot. And, and we look at certain, one of, one of my, one of my favorite things to look at is what we spend on police services. I think we need to make a limit on that. That would be one way to look at it. So I, you know, I'll pick a number, 10%, and, and that is our goal. I don't, I don't, I think that's prudent. I don't know what 10% would be. You think it would be, what do you say, 500,000?
268, 634.
268.
200, under 300,000.
Yeah.
And that seems reasonable and it's not holding a lot of taxpayers' money just in case. And, and if it comes to an issue a year, we maybe, oh, well, maybe we need to dip into that this year, not next year. Yes, I, I think we're, we're, we're a very affluent community. Our, our tax base is excellent. I don't know that we need to consider raising taxes at all. I think that would be improving to do that. Unless we have a project we want to do it for, but we don't have any right now. We may come up with something like, like our parking deck out here.
We're not building a parking deck. It's not a thing.
So I think we're going in the right direction. I think every year when we sit down, we discuss what we want to have, our budget comes out, looks good. If, if we want to hold a couple hundred thousand dollars in reserve, I think we should do that. I don't, I don't think we need to change our operation very much. We're all, we've all got experience on, on what, what happens over the years as far as income goes and, and outcome goes. It comes into one lump sum, it goes out, dribbles out. So I think we want to experience on that. And so I, I think that we're all doing well. And if we want to set a limit of 300,000 or 250,000, I think that's fair. I, I don't know that that's excessive. I don't like holding people's money. Just because we have it, we're not going to gain any interest on it, that's for dang sure.
The excess, the excessive cost of buying a new major piece of equipment can set you back 150,000.
Well, we need to buzz it out. We need, like, we need, we have our, our CIP, our proven plan.
Yeah, that's why.
Years we had that. And I think we do a good job of that too. So I don't, I don't know that we're doing, we're pretty well. I mean, I don't see you striving to leave, flee town or anything. So we're good. Yeah.
Well, I take my own, I'm, I'm less concerned about the percentage that we pick and more concerned that we move in the right direction. And, you know, like, when will we be at the right spot? We'll know when we get there.
Hope so, yeah.
We'll, we'll start looking and say, damn, that thing keeps climbing. We got enough.
Well, there's going to be a time when we say, well, maybe we need to look at some other, other things that we need to balance things out.
But I want to avoid having, because, yeah, we don't, we don't make a lot of money and, and money that we have in a, in a money market account or whatever that's sitting in reserve. But boy, we'll pay a lot more if we have to borrow money to cover some emergency.
Yep.
And so I want, that's what I want to avoid is I want to try to avoid having to suddenly borrow, you know, $120,000 because we had something come up that we didn't anticipate.
Dwight, municipalities allowed to invest in I-bonds?
I'm not familiar with that.
The federal investment program?
I'd have to look into that for you. Right now municipalities are covered by Act 72 and now Act 10 of 2016. Most federals, things are included in there, but I'm not familiar with exactly what I-bonds.
I-bonds are doing about 9.6% right now.
How about cryptocurrency?
Yeah, we're not.
Absolutely not.
Sure.
So let's, um, let's get some suggestions.
Okay.
For this upcoming budget to move us in the right direction. And as I think Dwight framed it well, at first, let's make sure that our annual expenditures aren't exceeding our, you know, our revenues. And then talk about how we can stabilize our fund balance and, and move it in the right direction so that we're not going to shock people somewhere.
Do you want me to put together a draft structurally balanced budget policy and a health reserve policy and a fund balance policy for you guys to look at?
Health reserve policy?
We have.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let's give, I mean, it's, it's a lot easier to talk about something that we can read than talk about something that we're just speculating what might or might not be there.
Okay, I can do that for next month.
Our health insurance is accumulated because of low usage, safe working?
It's because we have low claims usage.
Low claim.
Because they charge us too much.
I'm with you on that one. I think the actuaries built, build some money in there.
Those actuaries do well, don't they then?
And I believe the reason they do that is because the consortium agreement says you'll never have to pay more. And so I think the actu, this is personal belief. I think the actuaries build in so that they can, you can cover the municipalities who fall short. Because the consortium covers anyone who falls short.
Sounds like a CYA to me.
There's a certain group of people that always make money no matter what happens.
We, a good analogy, there was a, there was a business in town here that had one of their vendors. And he was charging them a certain amount a month for all of their, all their locations. And if things got tough, well, can you cut back? Okay, I'll cut back. Wait a minute, you overcharged us? You're out of here. He fired him. So you're done. There's, there's some scare in that too.
Okay, so can we move on to the next item?
Sure.
Very good. Okay, electric supplier, electricity supplier contract.
Okay, so our electricity broker, Premier Power Solutions shopped our electricity needs. And I did send you an email today about that. We're currently paying 0.0553 per kilowatt hour with Direct Energy. She sent a follow-up email today to the one I had originally forwarded and I forwarded this one. Direct Energy is offering us an 18-month rate of 0.09586. And with the GRT tax, I don't know what that is, it's 0.10187. And that's less than the price to compare from West Penn. The managers met with the consultant from the solar power purchasing program and he was great. And he said that with the, how volatile the electricity market is now, since it's probably going to be at least a year till we're ready to go with the solar power. He said, if you get into a contract and you can get a good rate, you should jump on it. And he said, it doesn't matter if people come in later in this, in the solar power program. Like if we go for an 18-month contract, it's not a big deal if we come in six months after everybody else.
Are we subject to the GRT tax?
What's that?
My impression was that was something, a tax on businesses.
Oh, it could be. So then our, our rate would be the 0.09586 for 18 months.
It's going to double our electric.
Yeah. Did you look at your home bill?
Yeah, West Penn.
Yeah, 155%.
I mean, that's, that's just what's going. That's what's happening. Anybody?
Turn the lights out.
Candles. All right, good. Let's, yeah.
You want to do the 18 months?
Yeah, let's do, I think, I think so. Things are in such a state of fluctuation right now.
If that's your recommendation, let's go ahead. Is that what you want to do, Amy?
Hey, I don't have a vote.
Well, I'll give you a vote.
Proxy. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, Township Block Party. And I had sent something around earlier suggesting that we basically celebrate the fact that we got through this damn pandemic. And so my, my initial thought had been, let's kind of do the wine walk without the commercialization, without inviting people in from outside. But let's, let's get together and bring some food and bring some drinks and gather together and just enjoy each other's company.
Let's add, let's add the Blue Spring Park.
And then we have this, we have an alternative that staff has come up with, which is moving the location of Blue Spring Park. That would certainly change the character of things. We'd have a lot more, have stuff for children to do.
I think we could do that too. And so we'd be bringing Kool-Aid. Do that too.
Yes, you'd be bringing Kool-Aid.
But we could, we could probably, we could think of something, I mean, we can get, we can chalk and.
We both.
So, so those are kind of the, the two recommendations we have. And certainly Amy and the staff have come up with a lot of, of ideas of what we could do at Blue Spring Park. So folks, what's your pleasure? What do you think?
I like the idea. My points of caution are the open container alcohol issue applies in both locations.
We don't have an open container.
They don't have one.
We don't have one in Blue Spring Park. It's not allowed.
That's what I mean. How, how do we deal with that?
Well, I don't think the idea is people are going to show up with alcohol. I think the idea is it's supposed to be a way to get to know your neighbors and kind of hang out.
That point has to be made then because I would expect them to.
I would, you're saying. Calling it a block party, people are going to be wanting to drink.
Yeah.
Well, I, to me, yeah, to me, if it's, if it's at Blue Spring Park.
It's a community event.
It's a community event. It's, it's truck rides, it's games for the kids. It's that kind of activity. It's, if it's on the diamond, it's getting together, it's a social hour, it's a picnic, it's a backyard picnic.
We could, we could have both. You could have Blue Springs Park and then we walk off a little bit of Pine Street for the, how should we say it?
Pine Street?
Wagon Street.
Adult beverage area.
Pine Street?
You could block off.
Isn't it pine?
Yeah, Pine Street runs up to there.
Yeah, just along Pine Street a little bit, block that off and that could be your adult beverage section.
Well, I don't know that that's one, those are two separate issues to me. I don't know that we should mix the two up. If they want to have a, if they want to have a, 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 a social event or whatever you want to call it, Blue Spring Park, do it. Do what you want to do. Have the guys and trucks are available, do that. But then we want to have what Bruce suggests, let's do that. It's a different day.
Yeah, I was just looking at, from the perspective of when you have a block party, usually there's food and people come and they, and we weren't, we weren't talking about doing any of that. And so I was afraid people weren't going to come unless there was something for their kids to do.
Well, I thought, well, how would you know?
Well, I know how people could be, so.
What? You, how would you know? Well, I, I think we're talking about two different issues here. If we want to have a community event at, at the Blue Spring Park for kids, right, let's do that. But we also certainly can have a little get-together in the diamond too.
I'm sure that all the, the speed requests we have coming up from various neighborhoods will, will have an adult beverage component to it.
I'm counting on it.
Don't count on it?
I am counting on it.
Oh, sure, sure.
I mean, I'll say, I do think the 13th is a good day. We're going to do the maintenance facility in the morning. It's the last weekend before Penn State students come back.
And Green Bear.
So it's the, it's the end of summer. It's a window of opportunity. And again, I, my own feeling is we just, we've earned it. We've been through a hell of a couple of years.
The only thing, if we do a kid's thing with, with games or whatever, you're almost going to have somebody to run that.
The rec on the go truck, they staff it.
Okay.
Let the park and rec have it do it then.
Yes, parks and rec.
Yeah, turn it over to them.
No, they're not going to run the whole event.
Why?
I mean, also, I, I thought we could get a band and have a band down there and people could listen to music and hang out.
What do we got?
We could have a band on the diamond. We could have kids' activities at the park and a band on the diamond.
Are there any local bands that we could tap into, Amy, in general? Harris Township best?
Okay, so I don't know the Harris Township music system very well.
There's about five of them. Five good ones.
K-4 bands.
Are there any in Harris Township?
Yeah, there's about five good ones, yeah.
I would tap that as a resource, you know, to let them know that we're inviting them as a Harris Township group to come and exhibit or play or something.
Well, we could have a block party at Blue Springs Park and somebody could have an after-party.
At the diamond?
Wherever.
I mean, honestly, it's your park. You could say that people are allowed to bring alcohol to your park for that event. But there's a liability, there's a liability to the township if you allow alcohol.
We're talking about two different venues, really.
Yeah, we are. We are. We could try to do both, I guess.
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, have the Blue Spring Park in the afternoon and the Diamond.
We could do that. We could do that. We could do that. We could do that.
Well, the, the wine tasting event that went between May and Academy, how was that handled logistically? Who did that?
That was handled by private individuals planned it.
My idea was to take the, take the vendors out of it, to, to just.
BYOB.
Be the community, set up some tables.
Bring your own broad.
Set up some tables, you know, bring.
You don't want to know.
Well, then you have the logistics of who's going to do that. Bring, you get, what do we get the tables? Who does the moving? Is that a staff issue or?
That's the other thing because the guys are going to be working that morning at the maintenance facility. And theoretically, I don't think you want to make this like a 12 until 12 PM, 12 AM kind of thing. I think it should be a couple of hours because we're going to have to have the fireplace if it's on the diamond. The fireplace are going to have to control traffic for us.
People could walk around cars like we've done all our life.
Put my hand up, just like school. Why don't we look at doing both at the maintenance facility? And just have the, the open house and go right into the block party right at the maintenance facility? Because we could get the firemen to bring a truck or two down for the kids.
Isn't the diamond public property?
Why couldn't we do that?
Just keep the township, keep the township out of the diamond. Let them, let them do the Blue Spring Park.
I'm not doing it. I just was trying to come up with having a party, that's all. I totally want to have a party.
I like the idea of a, of a, of a, of a, of a community event at the Blue Spring Park. Sure, that's a good idea. Do it. Let's do that.
However you want to do it, I'm fine with it. But I just need to know what you want to do.
I'm more comfortable, just if we used the park, I'm uncomfortable with the regulation within the park system of adult beverages. How, how do we fit, how do we put those two together?
I mean, you could also do, you could also have the kids' events at Blue Spring Park and at the same time have bands on the diamond. And that encourages people to go up and walk around. We have the, we could probably get the show wagon from Center Region Parks and Rec and put it on the diamond.
Let's not get this organ. Let's, let's keep the government out of this.
Oh, my God.
Keep, keep the government out of this.
You are the government.
Well, we're, we're in it, bud. It came from us.
I know, I know it is, but I'm telling you.
Well, if we exclude ourselves, things will fall apart.
I think, guys, I think we, we all agree it's a great idea. I think we should defer to the man that had the original idea. What do you want to do, Bruce? You give Amy the direction and we'll do it. We're going to turn it over to the chairman and the chairman can make it happen.
I think it's a good idea. And I'll volunteer my help, chairman.
Let's, let's just close East Pine Street from, from Church Street all the way to Bull Avenue. Let's uh, let's just close East Pine Street from uh, from Church Street all the way to Bull Avenue.
We'll just party in Bud's. We'll party in Bud's house.
Bud's house and Bruce's house.
Yeah, we can do Bud, Bruce's house.
I have no problem with that.
I think we could close just part of the diamond, cause I don't anticipate this being hundreds and hundreds of people.
No.
I think we could close part of the diamond, the uh, east part of Main Street, part of the diamond, down past Duffy's. And we could, I think we could probably find some tables, people can bring tables.
How many do you need? How many do you need?
Couple dozen.
I got them.
I know. I know. And um, we just, we can, as far as I'm concerned, we're gonna have amplified music. Let's pick a time and a location and then advertise it to our community. And uh, that, that's my proposal, is we shut down the east part of the diamond, down past Duffy's.
Through Academy?
Yeah, through Academy, because there's no way of getting on or off the street at that point.
So, the fire chief just texted me to let me know that the fire company has zero tolerance for people consuming alcohol and riding on a fire truck. So perhaps we don't, we don't do that.
I'm not riding on a fire truck. Why would I ride on the?
They can drive them, but they can't ride them.
Okay, stop. Okay, so you wanna be, so you need to authorize closing the street then? I, I probably wouldn't close it on the Duffy side. I'd close it on the other side.
Okay.
Close it on West Main, the West Main side.
Whatever, that's fine. Yep.
Down to the first alley?
Either way, this way, which way?
Wagner Tennis, where?
Tennis Alley.
Tennis Alley comes in there somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd.
This way, I would think, wouldn't it?
Well, but there's more businesses this way and if people wanna go to Duffy's, you can keep half the diamond open and then come down East Main Street.
It's gonna be on the thirteenth of August. It's gonna be in the afternoon.
What day is that a day?
That's Saturday.
Saturday, I'm sorry.
So my, my proposal is that we close the um, west side of, pardon?
What are you doing?
I will talk about later.
Okay, no problem there.
That we'd um, close the west side of the diamond. Um, from noon to, whatever, noon to four.
Noon, noonish, one, two?
Noon to four. Well, the, the maintenance thing ends at noon.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So from noon.
Lewish, yeah, okay.
Noon to four, west side of the diamond, just the west side of the diamond. I don't think we need to go further down the street.
No, I don't.
Just the west side of the diamond, yeah.
Yep. And period.
Yeah, but whatever happens, happens. Come down and socialize. Just come down and socialize. Wanna bring food and drink, that's your card.
I'm sure we can find some tables. Bud's got some tables.
Do we wanna have a band or anything?
If we can find a band, that's great. If not, we just.
I'll make you five suggestions and maybe one of them will show up.
If not, we get some amplified music and.
Yeah, I got that too. I can get that for you too.
You got a boombox?
Nope, I got a guy that can do that. I got a guy.
Alright. So there's, 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 there's my, there's my motion that we close uh, the west side of the diamond.
Second.
On the thirteenth, from noon to five P M.
Hi, we just, just gained an hour.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, make it six, I'm sorry.
No, the manager has planned the evening.
We gotta clean up.
Why don't you give an hour gap between the two?
Yeah.
Okay, one to five.
One to five, yeah.
I accept that. Okay, that's a motion. Can I have a second?
I did second it.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you very much. Harris Township Block Party. Um, request to close Meadowlark Lane for a block party for, on August twentieth, from three P M to ten P M. And all the supervisors are invited.
That's good for them to know, isn't it?
Mister Chairman, I take a motion, we uh, we approve uh, item F and G.
Okay, so item F being closed Meadowlark Lane on the twentieth from three P M to ten P M. And item G, closing the one hundred and ten block, one thousand and ten block, one thousand one hundred block, Karen Street. On the twenty-sixth from three thirty to eight P M. All those, I have a second.
Aye.
Aye.
All those. Alright.
I picked Danny as the second.
Alright, all those in favor, yes. Alright. Okay, um, managers report.
No, no, you have to use, request to use the Bollesburg Fire Police.
Oh, we have a request to use, Tussie Mountain is requesting use of the Bollesburg Fire Police to control traffic at their Wing Fest events on July fourteenth, twenty-one, twenty-eight, and August four. Can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Are they, are they currently underway or these the only dates they're using?
No, they're currently underway.
I, I thought so, cause I was hearing music coming over the valley. So, okay.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, nay?
Is that in lieu of the Brawl Boys?
No, they work together.
Okay, um, we got the two block parties, okay, managers report.
Um, just one thing. On my manager's report, I mentioned about Mountain View wanting uh, streetlights. I met with uh, Mountain View today and I think we've narrowed their proposal down, that we're gonna try to put in two streetlights, one on the three twenty-two side and one on the forty-five side. And then we talked about, um, I'm gonna have the police put the speed sentries out there, cause they think that there's some speeding and other issues. And then also gonna have the police look to see if there's any kind of crossing we could do or crosswalk or something to make the uh, crossing with the golf carts a little bit safer, so.
There's already a crosswalk there.
Is there?
There's two, there's two.
Well, we're gonna look at it and see if there's anything we might be able to do, but it was a very good conversation and I, when I talked with Jen from Mountain View, I said, let's try this as a starting point and see if things improve and you think that the.
And there isn't a crosswalk there. There's, there's two paths that, that connect on either side. There's not a, there's no lines off of the.
So maybe as a first point, we could start with painting.
I, I think you should involve our Mountain View liaison on these discussions.
Who would that be?
Oh, I got my, I got my shirt on.
Okay, um, anybody else on, anything on the manager's report? Okay, approval.
Oh, excuse me, there was one thing. Mister Kip stepping down. We need to give him a thank you or attaboy on that.
Yeah, we will. We'll do that at the township dinner.
Okay, if you have any suggestions for a replacement, I know uh, Mister Kip has forwarded a few. I had one recommendation who is on the fence about it.
Someone's name appeared a couple of months ago, the, of course, that rides the bus to work every day.
Yes.
Someone from the Hill area, perhaps?
I think she was the one who's on the fence about it.
I don't recall who that was.
So. Okay, anything else on the manager's report? Okay, a motion to approve the vouchers. So moved.
Second.
For the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Vouchers are approved. Cog committee reports, try to expedite this. Executive Committee did not meet and canceled the uh, general forum meeting, which did not meet. Parks Capital Committee.
Can you do that again?
Oh, we're trying. Parks Capital Committee uh, hasn't met individually since January. Uh, we're not meet, not meeting in July. Um, the governance committee met. Our agenda item was to discuss what the authority should do, opportunities for the authority. Um, everybody was asked to submit their suggestions. Ms. Mattson submitted a four-page, very thoughtful um, uh, series of ideas on, on that from the authority. I, I submitted something saying the authority should uh, borrow money on behalf of the cog, that they should have oversight on any facilities that has been funded by the cog general forum. Including if they happen to occur in a municipal park. I was thinking when we had, we were talking about an act, an action sports park that maybe the cog would um, fund. So not necessarily a regional park, but something that was funded by cog. Um, and advise on operations, which we currently do. Ms. Danini forwarded a letter saying that she wasn't ready to make this decision, but she did feel the municipalities are doing a lot of work and get no credit for the work they're doing. Uh, agency should report to a cog committee, not an authority. Um, so essentially, the agency should be responsible, the cog committee says there's no cog agency, the report's to an external entity. Apparently, apparently the libraries don't.
What does all that mean?
Apparently, the libraries don't count. And um, yeah, and uh, at one point suggested that the, maybe the um, uh, maybe we should eliminate the agency and the authority should run things.
Eliminate what agency?
Park Agency.
That was a suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so, so the good news is we have next month's agenda already set, cause we didn't touch it. Um, Center Region Parks Authority approved fee policies for the upcoming year. Um, there's a mobile concession stand business plan that's coming forward. It's going to finance.
Yeah.
Uh, the one thing I questioned and I, I hope you would follow up on for us, is um, they wanna buy a motorized facility.
Yes.
And I questioned why they don't buy a van, a trailer that they could park. And if we needed more, we could buy another trailer and park it and not have to pay for something that has a motor in it that has to be inspected and eventually wears out. So, that, that, my, my own thoughts on that project. In addition, um, I missed it, but there was a special meeting on approving contracts from Milbrook Marsh Nature Center. Uh, starting with the education building and the welcome pavilion and getting that stuff going. And a lot of that is being funded by grants and other fundraising activities by the nature center rather than coming directly from the municipalities. So, that being my report, um, Mister Harding, Center County M P O, and onward.
Okay, Senator, M P O, we met uh, this last month and one of the biggest parts, we did a lot of uh, for those of you, when you do the tip and how, how things get funded. The tip runs, it's a four-year tip that they do one every two years, so it gets really confusing on where the money is. But one of the problems we've had is that uh, the Atherton Street Phase Two project, uh, basically it came out about twelve, eleven, twelve million more. Because of, because of increases from supplies, increases from labor, everything that you're hearing about, supply chain issues. It's gonna cost, it went from twenty-two million to thirty-three million. So a lot of our meeting was, okay, what can we move? And we had a lot of projects that were funded in this current tip that aren't gonna be completed, but they're, they're gonna go into the next tip. So we were able to free that money up to put towards Atherton, so we can get that done. Uh, the other major thing that we did, uh, we got a report that the State College Air Connector Pell Report, the draft. Should be done sometime around the end of August and it should be ready for the public to see sometime around mid-September, mid to late September. So uh, that's starting to wind down and I anticipate when we see that in September, there's gonna be a lot of public hearings, comments, that type of thing. So that's what's going on with the M P O. Facilities Committee, uh, you know, we had a really late meeting. The one thing that happened in the so, facilities committee that I still wasn't happy with, we, we, we wanted to get this new C, C I P out to the finance committee. So that here's how much we need to maintain our, our properties. And they, what they did when they did this, when you see it, it's, it's big numbers and I, and what they did is they've got Milbrook Marsh in it, they've got all these projects in those years. And I said, why don't we separate those out, so we can just see what the maintenance is, cause those things are already funded, they're going. So just keep them out of that. But they put that all in, in the C I P. So when you see the numbers, it looks like we need, you know, I don't think the first one was like six million dollars the first year. Well, a lot of it's stuff that's going on. But if you look at the numbers downstream, you start getting four or five years out and you see like how much we need for the pools every year, how much we need for the, that number comes way down. And I, and I think that's a number that's reasonable. Uh, it, it's, it's under five percent of our total budget. So I think that's something that, that came out of facilities. Other than that, it was a, it was a pretty thin meeting. Public safety, I do not meet until tomorrow morning and I can tell you that what's on there is, the big, the big thing I see on there is the fire company. Uh, wants to buy a truck that will, instead of putting the fire trucks out when they're out on the highway to block people hitting their, their, their guys. And the fire trucks have been hit something like eight times in the last ten years or something. Buying a truck that would be the, the blocker truck, so to speak. And they want about ninety-five grand for that. So that's being proposed to us tomorrow. Uh, I'll let you know how that works out. But that's, that's where we're at with that. Other than that, everything else is going on.
What's the big place been doing for the facility coordinator?
They've got that, they've got, they've got the advertisement all out for that. Uh, that, that is in, it's, it's not a discussion I did for tomorrow, but they did send what the, the, the presentation that they're sending out for people. What they, what requirements are asking for and all that. So they are looking for.
Expected to fill in third quarter this year?
I, I would say probably closer to fourth quarter, I would think. Well, Nigel probably knows it better than me. He's involved in all that. Interviewing guys and stuff.
I mean, yeah, I have no notes on progress about that. We didn't meet this month, by the way.
So that, that's your report?
Yeah, that could be my report.
That's a smooth transition.
Alright, uh, Mister Haymeister.
Well, we, Lucy also did not meet, but the solar power group did meet. The uh, group can, decided to continue the uh, project management team as is, as is composed. The uh, major sort of discussion was the possibility of uh, Bellefonte Borough and the Bellefonte Sewer Water Authority uh, joining our group. We gave them sixty days to make a decision and that then pushes our, our, our due date back sixty days. But uh, other than that, that's, that's sort of where we are. Sort of, sort of excited to see them, because they were invited the first time around. And I'm not sure what, what was caused the change in thinking, but uh, we entertained it and said, you know, if you want to join us, you're welcome. I hope, we hope they do.
Bud, finance?
Finance committee meets Thursday at eight-thirty. Uh, we have got a program plan, which I have a copy of it here. It's about this. It's that we will review that generally, not much to say about it. Uh, we refer, I'm sure, to the general forum to go back to other committees to discuss it. And the program, the program plan is simply a preview of, of wishes and thoughts of our upcoming budget. Which will be in October, November timeframe. So you will get, either get a copy of this online or you can get Deb to down, download one for you.
We were able to request printed copies.
You can? Well, that wasn't what I heard today, but okay, we can, we'll.
They sent email around and I requested five printed copies.
Good, okay. They, they, I'm glad we're doing that, so.
That's kinda a budget.
That we will do. Now, the, the C I P, we'll refer that to general forum too, I assume. I will have discussed that. Uh, supply chain discussion, the impact on a fire vehicle they're gonna buy, uh, that's, that's the thing with Bollesburg. Uh, may, may go from sixteen to twenty-five months for a personal piece of fire equipment. Depends what you buy. Uh, and of course, with the Parks Mobile's concession unit business plan, which is a food truck, but you're right, trailer might be a better choice for that. Same equipment, same everything. Hard to say. Uh, and we also gonna make a few comments on the fund balance policy and that will not arrive anything. Uh, so that's generally the finance committees.
Climate action, sustainability.
Okay, we met today and it was, it was a, more of a, a, a general session discussion about, we have a, developing a spreadsheet. Which I'm sure Amy has a copy of that by now, this, this spreadsheet. Uh, we're, we're gonna be asked to go through this uh, with the college township. What we already do on about ten different categories, a hundred or so of these. We're not gonna do it on one meeting or two meetings or, maybe Amy can just do it with one or, on her spare time. Uh, well, with energy building, uh, enhance energy, what we do, what we do now, uh, sustainable transformation, transportation. Reduce the trips of OneDrive or that type of thing, what we do. And we'll take an inventory, it's about a year's worth of work. And there's, they'll take an inventory of all this and then we will suggest, make suggestions what we could do to improve that. So uh, it's, it's very slow work. Uh, not much goes on in our meetings, it's very slow, so.
Would you ask the question at your next committee meeting is, what metrics are we gonna get from that that is gonna reduce greenhouse gas?
Would you ask the question at your next committee meeting is, what metrics are we gonna get from that that is gonna reduce greenhouse gas?
Well, we, we don't know what we're, we have now.
I understand.
So, once we do that, we will know what we, what we have. We are not taking any suggestions right at this point, which is kinda frustrating a little bit. But I know they have to go through the process and they have to do the inventory. Uh, a good example is, um, uh, enhance resiliency throughout the community, Community Resiliency Building Workshop, well, it refers to township as one of them. So, so there we go. And that is, it's gonna be a long process before we come up with anything solid on that.
Okay, Heritage Museum.
Uh, we're open to, open for business, Saturday afternoons for tours, uh, general look through there. Uh, we are gonna have an Oktoberfest. Uh, it will be in September.
No, that's, that's traditional.
Because it gets too cold in October. Uh, it will be as a fundraiser. Uh, a lot of the details not worked out yet, but we will, we will certainly, as soon as we know the times and everything else, we certainly will get that out to everybody. And at this point, it is going to be held at Dr. and Mrs. Nydiker's farm, which is up on the side of the mountain.
Way.
Way up the side of the mountain, lots of space, lots of parking, German ban, that type of thing. So, we'll, more information is forthcoming on that one.
Bruce, can you give me some information on this food truck issue? I don't remember hearing anything about that.
This is a new concept.
Sort of puzzles me as to why.
It's a new concept. They're having problems getting.
Why Park and Rec is getting into food rather than the.
Well, they can't get anybody to do it.
They, they have a.
Can't find anybody?
They have a concession stand at, up here.
Yeah.
I'll call. They don't have a concession stand at Hess Field. They're putting concessions in at the pools is, is, is difficult, and that's the main audience they wanna serve. So, if they get a food truck, because they have, they have trouble getting people to do this for them.
Food truck owners, you mean?
Food truck owner, regular food truck owner for concessionaires don't wanna commit to a full season. You can contact, contract with them for, for a weekend or a special event, but they don't wanna commit to a full season. So, they've looked at the business opportunity, they've put together a business plan. The idea being if they, if we buy our own food truck, then it can serve as the both pools. It can serve as, uh, Hess Field on tournament weekends and stuff like that. Um, and then, you know, maybe expand for other opportunities. And then there's definitely a demand out there for it. They surveyed the, the public, the people that are at the pools and they're saying, yes, we need this, we want this, we'll spend money at it. There's a diverse, divergent opinions about what kind of services they want. Some people want health food, some people want wings and tacos and hamburgers and hot dogs. And so, but I, I think it's, I, I think it makes sense and it should have done right, provide them with flexibility rather than having a set concession stand at every place.
Well, it depends on how the business plan is written.
Well, that's, that's why we let the finance committee look at it.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
I have one other thing I would like to, to put in everybody's head as we head into budget season. Um, as I said, we were talking about apparatus at the one, uh, public safety meeting. How, how much, yeah, fire, how long of a lead time they are now and how much money you gotta put down and all this. I'm wondering if, if the fire companies and, and, I know we don't have a whole lot to say in there, but Bollesburg even should look at maybe instead of a five-year replacement or a ten-year, add a year or two, till maybe that we get through this supply chain issues and maybe they could be a little cheaper. I, I'm just throwing that out for food for thought as we look at these budgeting, is maybe we start, you know, extend the life of a truck here or there to maybe make it till we can get to the next step. That's just a comment.
What was the ordering cycle on the new trucks that's coming in?
Thirty years.
No, 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 how, how long did it take?
Oh, it took a bunch of years. Well, it did.
Much longer now.
It extended it, um, by, by two months. Uh, we, we expected it in May. We're gonna, we're gonna get it late. Well, final product, probably the first week of September. We have the truck now. It was, it's in, it's in our possession, it's been built. We still have to put it in service. It goes to, uh, uh, Blick and Mill Hall to, uh, install the extra stuff that we want on it. That will take several weeks and then training, so we, so, so, yeah, it's, what, what are the problems with purchasing new fire trucks? You, there, from what I understand from this, I don't know yet, but there's no option of paying early. Uh, we paid, uh, we probably saved, I don't know, I can't remember exactly what it was, it's been a year. Uh, we probably saved, what am I saying, sixty thousand dollars for prices truck by paying it upfront. Now, that option may not be available anymore, which is gonna cut, raise the cost of fire equipment. Why, I don't know. I just got a, just got a little bit of a glimpse of that when I was reading this. Do you know anything about that yet? The office, whenever they're looking at it, but, but it's, so that's gonna make a difference in price of fire equipment.
And that's why I'm saying maybe extend the life a year or something.
Well, you, you have certainly options. Uh, fire trucks are, can probably go, as long as they meet all the testing requirements and, and pump requirements.
Really, I understand.
Forever, but.
I'm not, we're not keeping some.
OSHA, OSHA has changes so often.